Good morning. It's May 28th, 9:00 AM. I'll call the order of the meeting of the Salina County Border Commissioners. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Wees.
Here.
Commissioner Hay.
Here. Please, if you're able to stand and join me in the flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
Aye. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll move into our citizens' input of the portion of the meeting where citizens can speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that will not be discussed on today's agenda. Are there any members of the Republican, sorry, the public that would like to talk or address the commission?
Yes, I'd like to.
State your name.
I'm Mike Dural. I write a weekly column for the Salina 311 newspaper. And over the past few weeks, I've dropped off a couple of sample columns taken from the city archives. They tend to be lighthearted, and so I thought you'd get a kick out of them. So today, I'd like to talk about a little more serious issue, and I'm hoping you have a copy of my most recent one titled "Making Salina a Better Place to Live." And it's about the concept of participatory budgeting, which sounds dreadful, but it's really very interesting. And it's been around for about 30 years. It's utilized in many parts of the world, including here in the U.S. And it's a practice where public and private entities set aside a chunk of money, and just regular citizens come together with ideas to improve the community, and then they submit proposals for this money. Example I use here range from a town of Sandpoint, Idaho, a population of about 8,000, up to cities like Boston and Chicago that will allocate a million dollars or more for these participatory projects. So it differs from the community foundation. My understanding of the community foundation is they will grant scholarship funds to individuals, but to apply for a grant, you have to be a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. But that's not the case in the participatory budgeting concept. This idea is endorsed by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, by the Urban Institute, so it's not a fly-by-night, untested kind of idea. Let me give you an example. I have relatives who live in Lyons, Kansas, and on the Fourth of July weekend and Veterans Day weekend, they put up these veterans banners. You may have seen them in some towns. They're about three by four feet, and they're attached to light poles. Most of them have black and white photographs of World War II veterans, but some are more contemporary with color photographs. It's a very patriotic red, white, and blue background. There's the photograph with the name and rank of the person, the branch they served in, and the years they served. They're really stunningly beautiful and add immensely to this community. So I checked around. A guy in Wichita is the graphic designer who designs these banners. He has a manufacturer. People pay $175 and submit a photograph to get their veteran on the banner, and the hardware costs about $90. So to give you an example of the cost, if this fund were to pay for the entire amount, 20 banners, it'd be about $3,500, and 20 sets of hardware would be about $2,000. So that would be around $6,000 plus the labor to install the banners. So that's an example of a project that might come about through this participatory budgeting process. So I'm just here today to ask you to consider the idea. I hope that you, if you like the idea, you would devote a sizable enough chunk of money so that the first time out of the gate, it will be a recognizable project that has a very nice impact on people around town or certain neighborhoods. And that starts out with a solid track record of something that was really important to do. So that's my pitch.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, so that'll move us into our consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda comprise of the approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable, approval of public foreign agenda, approval of the payroll, approval of county commission minutes from May 7th, 14th, and the 14th, approval of agreement to fund the city of New Cambria sirens, annual letter of understanding to Salina County Wick Support of Ellsworth County, approval of talk group MOU with the Kansas Bureau of Investigations, approval of ARPA Tax Force IV with I paramedics, approval of cereal malt beverage license 156517 for the Tanglefoot Wine Cellar, approval of the malt beverage license 156518 for the Tanglefoot Wine Cellar, and approval of destruction of records by law provided for the general election of November 7, 2023. Is there anything on the agenda that the commission would have any questions like to remove?
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, we have approval and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That passes 5-0. Okay, that'll move us into our E action.
The NixTech easement at Rural Fire District Number 7 Station with Hannah Bett, Deputy County Administrator.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am here on behalf of Fire District Number 7. They were approached by NixTech, who would like to obtain an easement on Fire District 7's property to construct, operate, and install an equipment cabinet to support their fiber buildout in that particular area. They worked with the fire district to determine the best location, and the cabinet would be placed on the south side of the fire station so it wouldn't obstruct any of the fire district's areas. NixTech would pay the fire district a one-time payment of $500 for the easement if it was granted by the commission. So Fire District Number 7, their Board of Trustees met on May 13th, and their recommendation is for the county commission to grant the easement to NixTech. Again, there's no budget impact at all on Fire District 7's operating budget, but instead, a one-time $500 payment would be issued to the district by NixTech and be deposited into the district's special equipment fund.
Okay, any questions for staff?
Couple of questions. Was this negotiated with NixTech?
Actually, Fire Chief Comark is here, so I will let him answer that question if he's willing to come up here.
Good morning.
Shane Comark, Fire Chief, Fire District 7. You got any good questions?
I have two. Was this a negotiated price with NixTech or an offer?
No, that's, I guess, just their basic flat. We'll pay you this to do this.
Did they also offer you a connection, fiber optic into the fire station?
They'll bring it to the fire station, but there's no...
At no cost?
No, they didn't. They didn't want to do any swapping for free internet. They would take the $500 and break it out over months, but they really didn't want to do that either because somebody had to keep track of it. They just assumed pay one flat fee and...
Right. I wouldn't think in of internet service other than just...
Oh, yeah, they're running service to everybody's house up there that wants it.
Okay.
For free.
Okay, that's what I wanted.
Yeah, if you don't take it now, and you want it later, then you have to pay to have it done.
Right.
But, yeah, we negotiated on, they wanted to go on one side of the building, and we got them to move to the other side, out of the way of everything.
Thank you, Chief.
And quick question here. Where this is located, is that pretty much all grass-type yard work, no rock and anything else? So what happens to the damage if they're, are they going underground, I know, to get there? So all the trench and everything else are...
Is that, is it their responsibility to take care of all that, to make it back to where it was?
Okay. Okay, anybody else? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back to commission. Oh, is there any public comment? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back to commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that for approval of RFA 2024-84 presented.
Second.
I have a recommendation for approval of RFA 2024-84. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Item number two is the contract award for downtown government campus facility master plan with Hannah Bett, Deputy County Administrator.
Good morning again, Commissioners. So we chatted about this just a little bit last week. This is a request for action to approve a contract with an architect engineering firm to do a study of downtown government buildings in cooperation with the city of Salina. The purpose of this particular study would be to create an overall cohesive campus facility master plan and really take a look at the buildings that the city and the county owns to really figure out what is going to be the best thing to meet our community needs in the future and also identify potential uses and reuses of vacant buildings, i.e. the county jail, and on the city side of the house would be Memorial Hall. So Salina County took the lead, and we issued a request for proposals back in January. We received a total of four proposals, but only two of those proposals met the requirements that were set forth in the RFP. So we assembled a staff of, I think, four to review those two proposals and score them individually. The two proposals that were scored were from Trainer HL and then ODMO. The request today is to award a contract with Trainer HL, who was the highest-ranked proposal, for a total cost of $299,627,000, and also enter into an OU with the city of Salina, who would be contributing $100,000 towards the cost of the study. The budget impact piece of it, so this was particularly previously identified as a CIP project for 2024, and the commission had set aside $200,000 for the study. However, subsequent commission direction identified funds in the American Rescue Plan to be used for this study. So with all the different actions that the commission has made as far as repurposing different ARPA funds, as it sits, it looks like we would only be left to pay $2,357,000 out of CIP for the cost of this study, and the rest would be paid with ARPA funding.
Okay, I just got one question. I mean, is our part, I guess, why is our part so big on this study? Is it because we got more skin in the game, or...
We do. So if you look at the different facilities that are going to be studied in this, we have the jail facility, we have got the island, we have got this building, we have got the health department, and we also have 203 North 10th Street. The city has Memorial Hall, the police department, and this building.
Okay.
And we pay two-thirds of the building authority, don't we?
Correct.
Right, so we're sitting there.
Sixty percent.
And again, it's 85% of the time, it's the same taxpayer, so...
Correct.
Glad you got the CIP money down from 200,000 to 1% of that, so I was happy to see that.
Makes it easier to swallow.
Looks like that ARPA has rode to the rescue once again for us. I would have a tough time swallowing $200,000. I think the public would, too. Getting it down in this range that we've got it now is much more palatable for me. You know, I'm weighing it one way or another. We've got to do something. I don't think that we have the staff all the way around, the time that it would take to do that. It's just one of these necessary evils that we have to deal with, and we are out of space, more than out of space. And our buildings that we're using now are outdated, particularly the health department. What are we going to do with the jail? We still haven't figured that part out all the way. So I guess in the long run, like I said, Mr. ARPA has rode to the rescue again, and I will be in favor of this.
During this process with Trainer, are there people that they work with on the city and the county level or commissioners during that, or do they just do their, there's findings by themselves and then they just bring it back to us?
No. So there is going to be a lot of participation by staff and elected officials, but also the public.
Okay.
So we have got a kickoff meeting that is scheduled for the 12th of June, if that's... And so one of the things that we're going to talk about is one of the types of big public events are coming up that they can come and set up a booth. And so I think the really good thing about this is we've worked with Trainer before.
Sure.
So we've worked with our staff, and we know how they operate. But if you remember, even when we were going through the jail process, how much public input was necessary to create the facility that we created. So this is going to be the same piece of it as a lot of having some public input.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, that brings me to a point that Trainer was very much involved in our town hall meetings with the jail. Is that something that they might consider doing here, or is that even necessary?
So it's, there are really not going to be town hall meetings. It's just more of public meetings where they show a map of the government campus and show pictures of what it could look like, or, you know, just get some ideas and some input from the public, not only from the public, too, but also staff.
But they'll run that.
Absolutely.
And the difference is that we're not trying to sell a project. We're going to decide what we do need and don't need and...
Correct. So a part of the end product with this is going to be, here's what everybody said. This is your buildings, and what cost you might be looking at for doing something.
We had a great deal of success, I think, and cooperation from Trainer in our previous projects. So that also makes me more comfortable with that part of it.
Any other questions? Any public comment? Okay, then I will bring it back to commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 2024-85. It was presented.
Second to motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve RFA 2024-85. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That passes 5-0. Thank you. Okay, that moves us into our informational items.
Answers to budget questions with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning, Commissioners. So this year, we, like, well, like every year, we're in the middle of our budget process, and we're going through and looking at the requests that departments and outside agencies have submitted and evaluating those. But this year, we are being a little more intentional about trying to get some public input at this stage of the process, not waiting to the very end. And so we have invited folks, posted on social media and other means, radio, et cetera, to try and ask folks to take a look at where we are and see if they have any questions. So we had two questions that were submitted by the May 23rd cutoff that we had informed folks. So I will read the questions and then read the answers to the questions. And then I also want to address after that the idea that came up last week at the budget study session from the commission and talk through a little bit the spreadsheet that was attached with a 3% scenario. But the first question we received is somewhat lengthy. It says, "Commissioners, I just read the report on your salary considerations for next year. It is striking to me that there was no consideration of salary variations in the county clerk's office as compared to the treasurer and others. Particularly in this climate and this election year, that seems a bit incongruous to me. Surely the demands on that office are greater, and as I recall and stand to be corrected, the positions allocated to the clerk's office were less than requested at the last meetings on that issue. Is there no room to even talk about that?" So in answer to that question, the first part of this question is apparently in reference to the commission's consideration of moving elected officials' salaries off the employee pay scale and onto a resolution. This matter was discussed on May 7th, and no action was taken. The issue will be considered again at a future study session, at which time the value of the county clerk position relative to other elected officials can be considered. It should be noted that the draft resolution viewed by the commission on May 7th included an election stipend for the county clerk, which that position does not receive currently. The second part of this question concerns the request of the county clerk to add an additional position in the office. That matter is being considered as part of the 2025 budget, and we thank the public for weighing in on this issue." The second question that we received is, "I would like a P&amp;L spreadsheet sent out to all the residents of Salina County. Is this possible? Thank you for your time and proper use of tax monies." So in answer to that question, the term P&amp;L refers to profit and loss, which are concepts applicable to private enterprise. County governments do not earn profits from our operations. Any excess funds generated in one year are rolled into the next year to reduce the amount of funding generated from property tax. Conversely, a loss would involve spending more than is appropriated, which is a violation of the state budget law. Another term for the profit and loss statement is an income statement, which summarizes revenues and expenses of a company during a specified period. The county produces a financial statement on an annual basis that displays this information. This statement is audited by an external audit firm, so we often refer to it as our annual audit rather than as the financial statement. However, the report contains the auditor's report, the financial statements, notes to the financial statements, and supplementary schedules. These reports are available on the county's website for the past seven years, and prior year's statements can be viewed upon request at the city-county building. The other suggestion is to send these statements out to all county residents. Sending them out in paper form would be a significant expense. The final report is a wire-bound volume containing 69 pages, and the estimated postage is $8 per copy. Given that there are nearly 30,000 postal addresses in Salina County, that would require the county to spend nearly a quarter million dollars, not counting the cost of printing. However, we do appreciate the suggestion that the financial statements may not be easy to find. What we can do is create an email group for individuals who would like to be notified when new financial statements are posted each year. Those who sign up would be sent a link directly to the final report. The county could also consider creating a popular annual financial report, which is a version of the financial statements designed to be more readable for individuals without an accounting background. This would be similar to the budget and brief flyer that we have been producing for several years. So those are the questions we received and answers to those questions. And then the other thing is last Tuesday, the commission met in study session and discussed the proposals from the departments and the outside agencies. And one of the suggestions was to look at a number, and the suggestion was 3%, and what if we inflated the this year's budget by 3%, what would that look like for next year? So I ran that scenario, and it was attached to your agenda for today. And so it's not quite 3% because on the salary side, we still have the steps to consider as well as the cost of living adjustment. So it ends up being slightly more than a 3% increase overall. But in total, for the five tax-supported funds excluding the 1 mil and 2 mil funds, it gets us down to where we're about $416,000 out of balance, so much closer. So I think it's a good starting place to think about, and then we can make adjustments from there. We still don't know, of course, all of the revenue picture, so as we get a clearer picture on that, there are some things within this scenario that would be required to get us down to 3% that I think are probably not smart for the long term. So, for example, this would have us fund absolutely no technology improvement for next year. I think that's probably a mistake. So there's some of those things that I would seek to sort of restore to the request and then look for other places where we could reduce and see what we could do on the revenue side to try and bring us in at that 3% level.
You know, Phil, thanks a lot for taking that time and taking a look at that. It's, I know that it was Commissioner Vidrickson that had the recommendation and was looking for support from the rest, and I think we all, you know, nodded our heads at that. So, you know, it's, I think, I think what we all are looking for this year is we don't want to have to raise anything we don't have to raise and, you know, make it easier for the, you know, for the taxpayers. So thank you very much.
Prelimarily, I have another thought in my mind in regards to the recommendation from managers of the departments and their requests for additional employees. And from my standpoint, being here in the building a couple of hours a week, I don't think that I'm qualified to determine that they need an extra employee or they don't. And I'm going to ask that the county administrator take on that responsibility to make that determination and forward that on to the commission itself. I just don't, I just don't want to be in that position to say yes or no when I really don't have the answer.
Remind me the next step.
So really, the next step is, well, there's a lot of steps that happen that you don't see, like getting the projections from the clerk and...
Sure.
But the next step that will be in front of the commission will be in the middle of June. I will be presenting an actual recommended budget to the commissioners. I believe that will be on June 25th. It's either the 18th or the 25th. I'll be in front of you and presenting the actual administrators' recommendations.
Phil, the printout that you gave us today, that is the one that coincides with the basically 3%. And is there any way that we could get, or is these numbers all include what was actually requested in the first place versus what... requested in the first place versus what we've whittled this down to? Is there a side-by-side comparison?
Not on that spreadsheet, but I could certainly do that. That's easy enough to do.
That would be helpful for me, anyway. In the same form as what we've got it here.
This is a long-term concern that I have and I don't mean to muddy the water with what we're going through right now. And I also don't want to do something quick like I proposed with the, you know, pay for elected officials. So, don't take this as I'm trying to get something done this year or something. But, the budget process is so much better than it was 10 years ago because of you and I think we've made great strides on that. I still think the outside agencies coming to us is a broken system. And it's almost like assumed that because we gave something to them five years ago, four years ago, and three years ago, that it's still a priority for the public. And it's hard, it's hard to just say no to somebody because they all need money and they all do great things. But, I think that that needs to be something over the next year that this commission kind of looks at and revamps or comes up with ideas. I don't have a suggestion. So, I'm not sitting here saying, "This is how we need to do it." I do know, though, that we have 44 years of experience sitting at this dais right now. And potentially, in a couple of years, none of us here with all new people. And I think it would be prudent of us with all of our experience to start thinking about different ways to do that. You know, because somebody got something five years ago, you know, right now, it seems like, you know, healthcare, childcare, homelessness are huge priorities for the public, but we're still funding things like we used to years ago just because it's always been that way. And I just, I would just challenge my other commissioners this, over the next years, to start thinking about a way to make that a little bit easier. And I think that'd make it easier for you when you're coming up with a budget, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Having additional direction is always helpful in coming up with a budget. So, yeah, I mean, I'll express a personal opinion here. I really like the idea of having that like at a future study session and having a conversation about it. I know the public speaker earlier talked about one specific process that might be something that could be incorporated into something like that.
And I don't, I also, and one of the things that I would bring up that I don't know the answer to necessarily, but I would like to see what private money people are, you know, before they come to public, what are you getting from the private sector? You know, and, you know, if you can't sell it to the private sector yourself, why are you coming and asking for taxpayer dollars?
You know, something that I, to expand on that a little bit, that I struggle with eight years later since I started on this commission, where do we draw the line of responsibility between the city and the county? I mean, most of the appropriations that we're dealing with involved things that happened within the city of Salina. I know that a great deal of our funding comes from city taxpayers, but when I'm looking out at the budget, where does the city's responsibility stop and the county's start? Or do we, are we in it together in that scope of things? I've struggled with that, trying to find the answer to that. Obviously, Salina is in Saline County. Homelessness does not really happen outside of the city of Salina. Our, you know, our budget is outside the city. I just, I just don't know where that line is, where it stops and starts. And I've struggled with that from day one and I'm still struggling with it.
Well, and I will say, that line is more jagged in Saline County than in many other places. You know, a couple of the things that are legally responsibilities of the county, EMS, solid waste, are things that we have contractually delegated to the city of Salina to run for us. So, I mean, it's a, it's a, yes, it's a fair comment, Commissioner Vidrickson.
Yeah, because he makes a good point because they're just going to come to, there's two pots of money there and they're going to both, they're going to show up at both meetings. And so, you know, you know, but there's really no conversation between the commissions. I mean, maybe that's, maybe that's a long-term thing is, you know, sitting down with the other commissioners, the city commissioners and saying, "Okay, well, you know, what priorities do we all have?" Anyway, again, I don't want to muddy, I'm muddying it too much. That's for a future study session. I just want everybody to realize, I know that this, it's broken right now and I don't think it works well.
You know, I'm not so sure that's muddying it. That's a pretty good thought is to bring the two commissions together and look at the, you know, appropriation, A, ask the county for this much money and the city for this much money. Where, you know, maybe together, we should decide where that, where that comes from or how that is associated with their particular commissions. Again, for something down the line, but it's a thought for, food for thought.
Yep. And I think your point is the same way, you know, when you get, you know, a person comes and asks the county for money and that same person asks the city for money, it's actually coming out of the same pot. It's coming out of the citizens, you know, the taxpayers is actually funding that. So, I mean, I think that's a great idea to be able to get the commissions together and take a look at some of this stuff. That was a real good idea.
The gentleman that was here earlier...
Next year.
Yeah, next year.
I don't want to...
The gentleman that was here earlier asked us to put up, you know, consider money for the flagpoles here in Salina. I mean, that's not something we can do. I mean, that's the city's flagpoles and even if we wanted to do it, we'd have to go to them and they'd probably let us, I'm guessing.
But his process was interesting. He was just using that as an example.
No, I get that.
Yeah, you're right. You're right.
Okay.
All right.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, we move on to commissioners' comments.
I'm done.
Okay.
Well, hearing no announcements, we have a few different executive sessions that are proposed this morning. So, first, staff would request that the commission recess to executive session under the attorney-client privilege exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act to discuss a matter of litigation for 10 minutes and reconvene in this room at 9:46.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, we're back in session. We'll move on.
No action was taken?
No action was taken.
The second request is staff would request that the commission recess to executive session under the non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act to discuss a department head performance evaluation for nine minutes and reconvene in this room at 9:55.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time, passes, we're back in the executive session.
Okay, we're back in session and no action was taken and we'll move on to the next.